Okay, hello, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, October 19th, 2022. Since we're in Committee of the Whole, we're a bit less formal. We'll be using first names and using the functionality of the Google Meet. So hands up. And if I don't see you by chance, please do feel free to interject. We have quite a heavy agenda tonight, lots of business to go through, including delegation and a presentation, as well as reviewing the culmination of lots and lots of work that all of you and staff have done. So in order to get through in a good way, we'll jump right in. I want to acknowledge that trustee Gray Jean has sent her regrets and Kelly will be joining us ASAP. And Curtis, welcome. Curtis and Tina, if you could let us know who's here from staff, that would be great.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair L Harrison and to all the trustees. We have a number of senior staff here who have items that they'll be speaking to. Not everyone is here, but all the people who will be involved in the meeting will be here to support it.
Okay, excellent. And Ethan, welcome as well. Okay, so staff, when you jump on, just let's make sure everybody gets introduced. And thanks, everybody, in advance for your time and keeping your presentations and questions as concise as possible. So item 1.2 is private session if required, and it is not required at this time. So we'll move on then to item 1.3, which is acknowledgement of traditional lands. And over to you, Margot.
Thank you very much. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern tradition of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Atawandaron, the Haudenosaunee and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these three lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: lands, water, plants, animals, ancestors that walked the forest, and the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you very much. And we will move on to approval of the agenda. And this agenda is as revised, and that was circulated recently, including a number of new links that have become available with the associated reports. So is there somebody that would be willing to make that motion? Thanks a lot, Heather. Is there any discussion on the agenda as revised? Okay, any concern with approval of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll approve that by unanimous consent. I want to welcome Kelly to the meeting. Thanks. We are on item 2.0 now, which is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have our minutes from Committee of the Whole meeting, September 14, 2022, and those were attached. Would somebody be willing to put that motion on the floor for approval? Thanks a lot, Lea. So that motion's on the floor for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any errors or omissions to draw attention to? Any concern approving those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we can approve those then by unanimous consent, and we will move on to presentations. Sorry, before we do that, I will take the question from Tanya. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you. This is in reference to the minutes of the September meeting. And one of my questions in September was regarding communicate to office staff about sometimes the inaccurate information they're giving parents when it comes to trustee support. I believe Director Ennis was going to take that away. So my question is, what has happened since September 14?
Okay, so the question is directed at Curtis. So it's not a matter of accuracy of the minutes. Those minutes were accurate. Your question is with respect to, can you just point us to where that your inquiry is?
Sure. So in section five, it refers to trustee questions and comments. And it's in the minutes, it says, "T. Rocha shared reports that office staff have provided inaccurate information to parents about school board support declarations. C. Ennis received feedback to provide correct information through frontline staff."
So we have prepared some information to share out. I don't believe that we have actually sent it out yet, trustee Rocha, but I will follow up with manager Jean Carrillo after this meeting and make sure we're sending that shared information out to schools. But we did prepare some information. I don't believe that the chain of events actually led to it being shared.
Okay, sounds like yet. It sounds like it's a plan in motion, not yet finalized. And Tanya, I'm not sure if your follow-up question would have been whether trustees can be copied on that, just so we're kind of in the loop on the information.
If I could make that request, I'm making the request. Thank you.
Request noted.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other queries at this point? Okay, seeing none. Trustee Reynolds, you are off mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries. Okay, so I believe we're at our delegation, which is 3.1.1. Selena Close has requested a delegation, the topic being dress code.
Hello. Welcome to the meeting. I love your...
Welcome to the meeting. Your iconic... Welcome to the meeting. Your iconic... Welcome to the meeting. Your iconic... I think that's on your end. Perhaps you have more than one device going at this end bar? You have more than one device going at this end bar? You have more than one device going at this end bar? You have more than one device going at this end bar?
Selena, you will have to stay muted while everyone else is speaking, until you're speaking.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I needed to shut down. I was on the live stream on YouTube. I apologize.
Exactly. No worries. Thank you for doing that. So before you get started, I just have a couple of framing comments to make. And first, let me say welcome and thank you for taking time to be with us tonight. I know General Manager Carrillo had provided you with some information for the delegation. I just want to also publicly state, this information comes from our delegation bylaw. And you'll be given five minutes to present, up to five minutes. Don't feel you have to fill the whole time. I do have a timer on my iPhone. Following your delegation, I, I'm Tracy, by the way, hello, I'm chairing the meeting as the vice chair of the board. I'll open the floor to trustees for up to 10 minutes of questions of clarification to you. Trustees may also ask questions arising from your delegation to staff, and there's not necessarily a time limit on that. I just want to reiterate that the role of trustees is related to governance. So when your request came in, it was about dress code, and we've taken that kind of as a high-level governance piece. What we're not able to do is identify specific individuals, including staff, students, or community members, or trustees. And unfortunately, if we start to go down that path, we're going to have to, I will call you out of order. And ultimately, there are mute functions and all of that, but I trust we're not going to go there. And the reason why is because in our work in this role, we're governed by a number of laws. One of them is the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act that requires that we protect the privacy of individual staff and students. We're also governed by various labor laws and the Education Act. So just in case you're wondering why, that is why. We value respectful discussion and hope to go down that path. If you have any questions before we start around those kind of parameters, please let me know. I want to make sure we're crystal clear here.
I think I am fine. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so I'm going to get my, I use an iPhone just in case you're wondering, and go ahead.
Okay, great. So my name is Selena Close. I'm the mother of two children, one who currently attends OT and one who is a graduate of OT and now in second year university. I'm also the daughter of a prior director of the school board, and I can confirm to you that I am firmly rooted in support of the public system. I'm here because I'm very frustrated. I have followed all the laid-out courses of actions for rectifying a concern within the board, and I am extremely concerned about the social, emotional, physical, and academic development of the students at OT. Let us establish right from the beginning of my delegation that I am not questioning the right of an individual to declare their sexuality and to be treated with respect.
So hold on one second. If I can just, if I can step you back to the dress code, I just need to make sure that we're going to talk about the big picture dress code, not even necessarily about a school. We can talk about students in general. So please do continue in that light.
So I'm just wondering, is my five minutes, was that taken from my five minutes?
Absolutely not. Don't you worry.
So that being said, there are many occasions that accusations of being a homophobic person stop all rational discussions regarding legitimate issues which surround circumstances such as this one. This is not a gender issue. I am here to...
Hold on one more time. I will remind you, sorry. I paused your time. Sorry. You keep talking over me. If you keep talking over me, nobody can hear your points. So I've paused your time again, and I'm just going to point out, you mentioned an individual. I specifically asked you not to do so. So I'm going to ask you to step it up to the high level and talk about dress codes in general, not a specific school or individual. We will be contravening the parameters within which we work. So I'm going to ask you, before you continue, are you able to adhere to those parameters?
Yes.
I don't want to keep stopping you, and I know my instructions have been clear at this point.
In my opinion, you have not adhered to the standards set out as the school board disputes, covered in section 169.1, particularly promoting student achievements and well-being, promoting a positive school climate, promoting the prevention of bullying, ensuring effective stewardship, and developing and maintaining policies and organizational structures. It has been incredibly difficult to have open lines of two-way communication with the school board over the issue of a teacher. I am frustrated and upset that what feels like...
Point of order, please. Point of order.
Okay, please stop talking over me. Please stop talking over me. Again, if we go with the three strikes rule, this would be it. I'm asking you. I'm telling you, you cannot speak about a specific individual. So this will be, I'm just going to be super clear. Last time I asked you, can you adhere to those rules? You said yes, but you didn't. So I will give you another chance. Please do not reference to a single school individual.
I'm wondering what I would be delegating on if I wasn't speaking about a school or an individual.
Your delegation requested to speak about dress codes.
Well, would a dress code apply to a school or an individual? Would a dress code apply to my student or to a school?
Sorry there, we're not having a back-and-forth debate.
Okay, so once again, I believe that this communication is, once again, as I was saying until I was cut off, the communication between the parents and the school board is not sufficient. There is no order, and we're not able to dialogue.
Yes, Madam Chair, yes, Amy.
I would like to, an opportunity to perhaps explain it in a different way.
Okay, we'll do that, Amy. We're going to do that after this, kind lady's time has elapsed, and I do appreciate, I just want to point out...
No, Vice Chair L Harrison, I'm trying to explain the rules in a different way.
Oh, I think we're...
Because as much as you think you've been clear, I want to make sure that another approach is taken to ensure that the delegate is given every opportunity to continue and understands from more than one perspective. Okay? Is that all right?
Amy, please be brief.
I will be as brief as possible. So when your delegation says you're going to speak to one particular policy, in this case, it's the dress code policy, we expect you to speak to the policy, not to how a student or a teacher or a school has not stayed with the policy. You may speak in generality about the student body, all teachers, all staff, all schools, but you may not specify one teacher, one student, one school. I hope that's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I actually, what I had prepared is not being received by the board. So I think I will end the delegation by saying that it is my understanding that on October 17th, you received formal communication, which was representing a very concerned parent community, and I request that you review this and take appropriate action on behalf of the students. It's your role as a board, and the student should come first. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. And so I just want to summarize what I've heard and then open to trustees. Firstly, I want to say thank you to both you and trustee colored, Amy. And I've heard you talk about communication in general terms and a concern about information flow. I've heard you talk about the role of trustees, and I encourage you and your colleagues and community members. Andrea, actually, in a group, worked really hard to put together some information about what the role of trustees is that's found on the board website. It might be just of interest. And then I want to open it up to trustees to see if there are any questions of the delegate. Are there any questions of clarification for staff? Okay, well, I want to just remind that the request from the board for staff to report back, it will be an information item regarding dress code considerations, which I believe that your delegation was generally about, and that is scheduled to come back in the next couple of weeks. So I know people will be waiting with great interest to see what that report looks like.
Am I able to ask a question, Tracy?
That is not generally how it works.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Okay, but before you go, just in respect to your comments around communication, and I do encourage you, just because it's not how it generally works in the context of these meetings, because we follow Robert's Rules of Order and a particular way of doing things, which can be cumbersome in some cases, but also lend us a framework and order to get through a lot of things. That's not to say there aren't other ways. So if you are part of a particular school community, please get in touch with your trustee. After that trustee, there's the chair of the board or myself that we can also have conversations with.
I have actually attempted all of those things, and with the exception of speaking to my trustee, I'm unsatisfied with any communication or have been unable to connect with anyone at the board, which is why I was here tonight, to have an open discussion about a concern, because I'm a parent of a daughter at OT, and I have concerns. But I appreciate your time.
So noted. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time as well. Okay, colleagues, thank you for your points of order, and I really do again want to express my gratitude to the member of the community for coming forward. So we'll go on to item 3.2, which is the LTAP update, public feedback. And over to you, Director Ennis. It's showing up as Ian presenting, but I see Fred is on screen.
Thank you, Tracy. We have General Manager Thibault, and he's going to take us through that.
Evening, everybody. So tonight, we'll be presenting the feedback for the 2021-2022 LTAP. So first and foremost, one thing I really do want to say is thank you again to the Board of Trustees and the community of the whole in terms of assisting, planning staff, and developing this document. I know last year, we spent a lot of time discussing it and going through it, so we do appreciate it, because it's led us here today, as well as I need to do, obviously give a shout out to all of senior staff, as well as my team in assisting in developing this document. So we're happy to present it tonight, and we'll be even happier to present it next week in its close-to-final form, and I'll get into that in a second. So secondly, it's also a very packed agenda, as I noted. So tonight, I'll provide an abridged presentation, and hopefully that gives us a little bit more time to have some questions. That said, if we don't get to all your questions, by all means, please direct them to ourselves directly, and we can certainly respond, and especially if they have any impact, and maybe updating some of the LTAPs prior to its finalization. So I'm just going to jump right into it. So in terms of our process, we opened, we presented the initial draft to the Board of Trustees on September 21st, and then we opened up the feedback portal the following week, between September 27th all the way up to October 12th. We used our standard process for disseminating information and receiving feedback, Twitter, board website, as well as notification directly to our parent communities. In terms of the feedback results, I'm really happy to announce that we had a total of 996 respondents, and I would say that the vast majority, I think only two were unrelated to the LTAP. So for the most part, we had a number of good responses. The vast majority, again, was from our parent community, as well as prospective parents, and the third was from our student community, but certainly something we can try to enhance over time, and I'll get into that later. In terms of the municipal distribution, I'd say the majority, almost half, was from the town of Oakville, followed by the town of Milton and Second, then Burlington and Halton Hills. In terms of the distribution of the areas that people were responding to, this gives you a general overview of where those concentrations were. So it's mostly North Oakville and West Oakville, and the established urban boundary at the town of Milton is where we've seen the most comments. I won't get into details here, but the presentation I was shared with you tonight provides an overview of the amount of respondents that we had per ERA or SRA, which is how the LTAP is divided. I'd say in terms of themes, some of the largest respondents were from the Aldershot area in Burlington, which was regards to some future boundary views there. There was Central Oakville in ERA 116, again, was related to some prospective boundary views that we were proposing in the area. And last but not least, in North Oakville, with regards to what's happening with new schools, what's happening with redirections, and looking for additional information on that. But otherwise, we did have quite a good distribution throughout the other ERAs within the region. Overall, I'd say that the vast majority of those that reviewed the document were either very satisfied or satisfied, about 75% if you were to include those that were neutral or just were just acquiesce to the document, then we have about 85% of our respondents that were happy with this. With regards to our, I guess, the goal of our LTAP, which is really to engage as well as inform our community, it seemed like the vast majority of those that were reading the document were better informed or felt like they were okay with it being neutral. So that to us was a success in that they were able to find the information and better understand what's happening now or in the future, or if they were neutral, more than likely, there were no actions being proposed in their area. However, we did have some that did not have the information they wanted, and that was reflected in some of the themes that we'll discuss later on in the presentation. The other key piece that we had as part of the LTAP is we wanted to make sure that the information was easy to access and obtain for our parent community. So it seemed like, again, about 87% of our respondents were able to get this information, get to where they needed to get to, to better understand what was happening in their community. In terms of the themes and the feedback, so of the 996 responses, we did get... we did get about a hundred and forty seven that provided some further comments on what they did like about the document. And a lot of that was just providing the information about what's happening here in the community. So whether it was information on their school facilities, the projections, the data, as well as how easy it was to access the information, those were some of the things that were of interest. Key performance indicators, albeit we didn't have the information available when it was released. The idea of us presenting that information in future iterations of the LTAP was well received. Now, areas where we're looking to improve, I would say that a lot of it is grounded in how we're engaging with our communities and how we can make this document even more accessible and easier to navigate for our parent communities. So that's what we saw, the vast majority of the comments are relating to. How do I get to that information quicker? Because it's a large document. I don't have time to read all of it. And again, the intent is for you to, for our parent communities to get to what they need to get to. They don't need to know what's happening throughout the entire board. So that was well received. Other areas again, where they're looking on how we can improve was really. Oh, this is the additional information. Again, same thing with where we can improve is really how do we gather that feedback or give an opportunity for parent communities to maybe have a more active role in providing feedback? So maybe not just a, a feedback portal like we have. Are there things like we can do that are a little bit more engaging with our communities? Is it virtual meetings? Is it in-person meetings or things like that? Were a lot of the themes that we were seeing. The other thing too that we noted and I, and I highlighted here is that, you know, how do we include a student perspective? We have a lot of our students here too, that these are impacts to them. So how do we better engage with them? Because really at the end of the day, we only got about three point seven percent of our total respondents were students. Is there an opportunity for us to expand on that? So that was certainly one that shown us how do we, we better engage on that front. So I'd say in concluding statements, I think that overall, there's a, a very good satisfaction with the direction and the plan and what we're proposing in terms of our accommodation plans. We still have our same concerns with regards to overutilization when our new schools coming online, bad reviews and disruptions to communities. KPIs were well appreciated. That said, that there was a great interest, but also a little bit of, I guess, disappointment from the community that the data wasn't available yet. We will work towards that. But at least we know that there's, there's interest in it. And I think the last point I'd like to make is that we're, I think we still have a lot of room to grow in this LTAP, is perhaps less with regards to the document itself, but more on how we engage. So we definitely have some ideas around that, on how we can focus on that moving forward. So in terms of what we're going to be doing for 2021, I've, we've got five key points that we're trying to achieve by the November second approval date. One is to incorporate as much of the KPIs that we can. So we're still working towards that. Where there's opportunity to enhance or improve on some of our definitions, we'll do that as well. One thing that we heard too, and in, in maybe a quick win on how we can make this document easier to access for communities, is making municipal specific sections. So creating mini LTAPs for all the municipalities, which would just be consolidating a document and removing sections that aren't pertaining to that particular municipality. And the other thing too is to just better communicate as part of our last approval of what the next steps are on some of these accommodation processes. A lot of this was, well, we didn't have time to provide feedback on these proposed boundary views or these boundary views are implemented in, and clarifying that these are just identifying them, they're not approving them. That's a separate process and maybe just clarifying that statement, which is something we definitely saw in some of the feedback. In terms of our 2022 roadmap on what we're doing for the next iteration of the document. So we're already thinking to the next step after this one is improved. I won't go through all these points, but I think one of the main things we really want to achieve is better engagement with our communities. And we have some ideas surrounding that. So what I do is encourage trustees to, there's a hyperlink at the top here. That'll lead you to a Word document, which is a, an overview of a lot of the ideas that we have in terms of how we can improve. So we'd love to have your feedback on that. We've also incorporated as part of this document, some other links to the feedback and summaries by municipality, if, if you're interested in reviewing those. So with that in terms of next steps, again, we'll be presenting the final LTAP for November second. And then once that's done, we'll be circulating the LTAP to our community partners so that they're aware of the plan. And then we'll start up with our, the planning and partnership annual meeting and identifying spaces that are available for partnerships. So with that, happy to take any questions from our trustees.
Thank you. And it looks like we have some. I saw Joanna and then Marco.
Hi, thank you. Through you, Vice Chair, to General Manager Thibault. I of course don't expect you to know this off the top of your head. But I'm wondering, first of all, I want to say I'm really impressed with the HDSB community engagement with the survey. Almost a thousand people responded. That's quite impressive. I see that fifty percent were from Oakville and a large portion were from the west side, which would be my area. So of course, I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head. And maybe, you know, you can provide me with that information later. But I am curious what was being said, if there are any key kind of themes or concerns emerging. And also I'm very curious to hear what students had to say, if there was any themes or concerns emerging from the students.
So that's certainly something we can take back and drill down into it. If you go on that hyperlink, there are some feedback notes on some of the ERAs that are impacted. So you can have that opportunity as well, but we can certainly get back to you on that one, Joanna. With regards to the student engagement piece, really all we had was one student that said, you know, in, in the, the general comments that were open-ended, improve student engagement. And to me, it's, you know, it was only one response, but at the same time, I think that just speaks to, you know, maybe we need to have better student engagement, have more of an opportunity for them to provide their commentary, especially at the secondary panel or leading up to it. So it was something that just kind of popped up at me as something that, you know, maybe when we're looking at engagement, how do we maybe make this a little bit more accessible? And actually, you know what? There was another comment that stuck with me. And it was probably one of the first ones that were mentioned to me by my team was make the document funner. And that kind of stuck with me as like, okay, you know what? Well received. And there is, I think there are ways to make this more engaging, but also informative and maybe fun. So that's maybe a bigger challenge, but certainly something we could think about.
And just a quick follow-up, if I may, we do have our student trustees joining us at the meeting tonight. And I'm thinking that perhaps there's an opportunity for you and Ethan and Cindy to figure out how perhaps the Senate could be involved in that student engagement piece that the student who responded to the survey was reflecting on.
Thank you. Go ahead, Marco.
Thanks, thanks Tracy. So, okay Fred, so I've got a quick question. My questions are always quick, but um, so in the LTAP feedback results, you talk about the not somewhat satisfied, not satisfied, neutral, satisfied and very satisfied. Do we know if the not satisfied were within a certain pocket? Or was it, like, do we know where those not satisfied people were? If there was a certain area or do we just have general knowledge?
We, we do have the capability to better understand where the non-satisfied were. So that's certainly a layer we can look at and get that answer to see where it is related to. You know, in reviewing the commentary, a lot of the not satisfied individuals are just not satisfied with there being any boundary views being proposed in the area. Or again, some of the, the things that we noted were there were areas of improvement that was also there. But you know what? That's certainly something we can map and better understand where the, the lack of satisfaction was.
Yeah, it would just be interesting, like if those unsatisfied people are all in the same place, that might be sort of an area to focus on. I don't know, just a suggestion maybe. Thank you. Again, thank you for, this is amazing.
Okay, Cindy. Hello.
Hi, so trustee Oliver just mentioned Ethan and I about kind of like bringing us in for that student engagement piece. We've actually been in a meeting before where we've talked about how to increase student engagement when it came to like really official documents like this. And I agree completely with what that one student said about like, you know, potentially making things more fun and things like that. Because we have talked a lot about how sometimes like you just scare students away when you see that really like professional looking language and you just see like words that you don't know. So perhaps making that information a little bit more digestible and a little more understandable for students, especially younger students, would help a lot in increasing student engagement and not kind of like scaring them away from engaging with this process in the first place. But Ethan and I would be more than happy to help with this piece if, if you're looking to increase student engagement. And I'm sure our Senate has many more ideas on how to do this. And yeah, I would just like to reiterate what, what trustee Oliver said about bringing Ethan and I in on this.
I appreciate that and looking forward to it.
Okay, so I don't see any other hands up at this point in time. So I think Fred, next steps are that this will be before the board at the next meeting? Or in next meeting or in two meetings?
The November second meeting.
Right, so in two meetings for consideration for, for approval. So it sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
And thanks, Loreen, as well for being here. Okay, so we'll move on now to the administrative procedures update. And we have nine of them on the agenda. So I'll turn it over to Curtis and see if he can walk us through and let us know which ones are housekeeping and which ones are more substantive changes. And people can ask questions on that basis.
Thanks so much, Tracy. First up, we have, Asari's going to walk us through the electronic monitor. And I think this one needs a little commentary.
Thanks, Curtis. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Tracy. So before you is the electronic monitoring administrative procedure. This procedure was written as a result of the Employment Standards Act being amended. Bill eighty eight amended the Employment Standards Act. And now it requires that employers have a written policy that notifies employees of any electronic monitoring that is undertaken in the workplace, whether or whether or not you have a, an electronic monitoring happening in the workplace. And if the employer does have such activity, the policy ought to describe how and what, and in what circumstances the employee, the employer is electronically monitoring their employees and the purpose for which this information is obtained. So you will see in this administrative procedure, we list the various monitoring activities that occur. We list what they are, their description and the purpose and the area for which this monitoring is occurring. You'll see that the focus is primarily in facilities and network security. And obviously, there's also the video surveillance that could be used in the, that, that the board undertakes an investigation for whatever reason. So that's the purpose of this AP. And again, it's legislated as, as an amendment to the Employment Standards Act. And I'm happy to take any questions in relation to this new administrative procedure.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Thank you. So when I read it, or when I read it, it, it talks about, as it applies to HDSB staff and trustees are not staff. But in, in reading, I'm trying to work two different keyboards at once here. In reading this, it talks about email tracking. Are the trustee emails tracked as well? And whenever we have a, a key system, doesn't our key card also get tracked? I'm ju, I'm trying, I guess what I'm asking is, I'm, I'm going to assume that our emails get tracked, our key cards get scanned. But this procedure does not apply to us. I'm trying to, where's the delineation between staff and trustees in this procedure?
Thanks, Tanya. So the, the strict application of the bill defines employees in a very narrow sense. So, you know, as it relates, for the purpose of employment standards, you're not, a trustee is not an employee of the board. Having said that, this procedure does not limit the board's ability to track email activity of any individual, be it a trustee, a volunteer, an employee in, as defined under ESSA, in terms of their email, traffic, their, their access to the buildings. So you are correct. If the reading, a strict reading of this, of this AP would suggest that the email activity and/or the access card activity of a trustee is not monitored, that's not entirely accurate. For the purpose of this AP, you're not considered an employee. But we can certainly expand that to, to, to say that any, any individual who happens to have a relationship with the board, be it in a governance sense or an employment sense, would, would have those activities monitored as set out in the AP. And I want to, I want to say that the monitoring is not from a, you know, surveillance point of view. It's, it's literally for the purpose, it's in the context of network security and the context of physical security and, and physical space security. So we do not monitor the employees', you know, keyboard strokes or mouse activity if you're working offsite. That's not the context of this. If we did so, we would list that. But to your question, yes, a narrow reading of this would say trustees are, are not being monitored, but that's not really true either. So we can amend that for sure. Thanks for that.
Okay, are there any other questions on this one? Go ahead, Joanna.
For the sake of full disclosure and transparency, I'm wondering about the thirty day period. And I know it says within thirty calendar days, but that sounds like a long time for somebody to be informed that, you know, all of this is monitored, right? And that includes new employees to the HDSB.
So the, so obviously this came into effect, thanks Joanna, this came into effect Oc- October eleventh. So this policy had to be developed by then and shared within thirty days of the, you know, shared within thirty days of its development by, you know, the broader population of staff. I don't think it will take us thirty days to disseminate this to employees. As soon as this meeting is over, the, the, the communication of this will happen. Our unions are aware of this, of this policy. So I think it's, it's really, you know, to give, to give employers, not just school boards, it's, it's applicable to all, to all employers in Ontario, a bit of breathing room to sort of navigate the best way to disseminate this to their, to their employees, depending on the complexity of your operation. So yeah, it, it won't, it won't be taking us thirty days to do so.
Thank you. And Joanna was asking a similar question to the one that I have, which is how, what is the manner of dissemination? And if people have questions about this, who will they reach out to? I guess it says at the top, the responsibility superintendent of Information Services and HR. So will they get direction on who they should speak to?
Yeah, so once, so typically what we use is we leverage our email system to communicate to employees as, as required by the bill, that this AP is now alive and active and in play. It's posted on our website and we provide the link. And if you have any questions in relation to the, to the AP and what it means, you know, you can direct them to your supervisor, your union or human resources. So there are various avenues that they can, you know, direct their questions to. The messaging that we have is, is direct your questions to human resources. If you're an At4 employee, you have a point of contact and so on, so forth. So that would be the method. So it's email and then it'll be posted on our board website.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we can, back to you, Director Ennis. Thanks, Asari.
Could I make a suggestion, please?
Yeah.
Um, well, we've already got to the point in our agenda where we're supposed to be finished the APs according to the time schedule. And I'm wondering that instead of presenting each one individually, if we could ask if trustees have questions about any of them instead? That might reduce the amount of time this takes.
And I think Director Ennis Curtis was going to highlight the new ones and the ones with substantive changes. So. the new ones and the ones with substantive changes. So this one would would be one of those, but uh, Curtis, is there, you know, any others that require some commentary?
Um, just brief commentary. Roxanna, you have the next few. Um, is there anything that needs to be highlighted among those?
Uh, only housekeeping for hospitality school generated funds and the auto insurance and the disposal of surplus. The only one I wanted to highlight is the travel and reimbursement, if I can jump to the end or I can wait my turn.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Uh, so for travel and reimbursement expenses, we have updated the meal allowances uh, in order to reflect the current inflation and and the costs, the the rising costs. Uh, so trustees would see the different individual meal rates as well as the group rates that have been provided within the the procedure. And they would apply as well for trustees as they do to staff.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no questions, are there any other ones, Director Anis?
Um, I'm looking through, I don't believe so, that I believe that covers the highlights that we wanted to raise tonight.
Okay, sounds good. And so then I'll look to trustees. Are there any that we haven't talked about where you have questions? Okay, seeing none, that we will wrap up that item and thanks there Amy for the suggestion. We kinda did a a hybrid of the plan and your suggestion and handled it all in a timely way. So much appreciated. So we will move on then to item three point four, uh, which is standing committee updates. And three point four point one, governance committee. So the first one under there is the audit committee policy and governance procedure. So
I would like to defer to Roxanna for that one.
Yeah, okay.
So with regards to the audit committee, um, policy and governance procedure, the only change, it has been reviewed by legal and checked against any changes for regulation. There are no changes to regulations. So the only suggested change was in order to align the procedure with the board meeting is for the minutes to be provided um, in the package in advance for of the following meeting as opposed to the prior version stating it was within thirty days, I believe. Uh, so other than that, there are no substantial changes to either the policy or the governance procedure.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, so the APs and this policy and procedure will be coming forward at the next board meeting for consideration for approval. Okay, thank you. No questions at this time. We'll go to three point four point one point two, delegation policy and governance procedure.
I've just noticed that the naming and renaming um, isn't on the list and I'd like to request an amendment to the agenda to add that now.
Amy, it's down at the bottom, three point six point one, under other business.
Other business?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we'll go to the delegation policy and governance procedure then. Can someone open that and share it or do you want me to share it? Do I have permission to share it?
I believe you do. And I think I would ask the same of you, that you highlight key changes and then we can questions and comments. Okay.
Okay, so I don't see the share functionality. Oh, there it is. Just a second. A window. Google meets keeps changing. There we go. Share. Let me know if you don't see it. And the changes at the top are to reflect the date that it's being brought to board, which will be um, next week for the board meeting instead of June. And we are also recommending, like for the bylaws where we've switched to a four year cycle so that the same document won't be reviewed twice by the same board. We are recommending that policies also go to a four year cycle. So that is a change that will be happening in the um, policy and procedure framework policy. And that's something that we're working on right now with manager Carrillo. Um, within the policy itself, there's not much to state here except the addition of this phrase here at the end. Prior to this iteration, it just said for decision. And in conversation with Tracy, um, we decided that it would be prudent to add or related to a matter of governance since our role as trustees is governance. And so we've added that phrase in to the policy. If there are any questions about the addition of that phrase, please let me know. Margot?
Hi, thanks Amy. Not necessarily about that specific piece, but I'm just wondering. Part of our role as trustees is to ensure communication to the board from from the community. So I'm just wondering with that. Like for me, delegations are an opportunity for us to hear from the community. So I'm just wondering if this is too narrow of a scope? I don't know.
Um, well, because items that are not for decision don't have the ability for trustees to act, like if it's an administrative or operational um, item, um, trustees cannot interfere with that. And so if if the public wanted to delegate on an operational or administrative piece that was on the agenda, they would be extremely frustrated to find out that trustees were not in a position to be able to make any change to that. Um, they would be heard, but they would be heard in a very frustrated manner. As I think we heard earlier this evening, um, the frustration for the individual who was wanting to delegate on an item that isn't on our agenda for decision and and that we cannot hear because of the content. It's, it, it raises false hope. And I've actually seen that in action when the Bronny Creek project was canceled by former director Miller. We had several delegations from people who wanted to save the Bronny Creek project, but that project had been canceled. And the director had made that operational decision. And when, at the end of the cycle, we we approved the budget, which we could have put back in there to to some spending on on um, outdoor education, would not have brought back the Bronny Creek project. And and the public didn't understand that their delegations were not going to result in action and there were very many upset people in the gallery that evening. And I know that those who were there that evening will remember it. It was a terrible thing to sit in the chair of a trustee and know that we could not bring back the project. And yet we were hearing all these delegations asking us to bring back the project. And and that is part of the reason why we do not hear delegations on items that are not for decision. Um, because it does raise false hope.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions about the policy itself? Okay, I will bring up the governance procedure now that I know how to do this. And again, here that the changes are very small. We had them highlighted. No, I don't see the highlights. Dear, we did have them all highlighted, but here is the revision history so that it will um, provide a guide for us. We shortened the name from public delegations to the board of trustees to delegating the board. We thought the public would be more able to find it if delegating was the first word. We incorporated the roles and responsibilities of the manager of governance and board services. Um, prior, the the role and responsibilities had not been included. Um, we removed the order in which delegations are heard to allow for flexibility and redundant phrasing. We added a paragraph indicating that meetings are live streamed and recorded. And we changed the timeframe from seven days to two days prior to the meeting for special delegation nights and added that the director shall post the information on the HDSB website because in that case um, it wasn't clear. And we also removed the timelines for delegation requests table because it was redundant. So it was just really mostly tidying things up, making it more clear and I think the reason why the pages are so funny with the word draft in the middle is a paging issue and I'm I'm hopeful that manager Carrillo will be able to correct that when it's posted. Um, are there any questions? Wow, okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Um, and the next one, Tanya, would you like to present the committees and appointments one and I can act as a backup?
Uh, no, you can go ahead, Amy.
Okay. This this one has come before and we've gone to legal and gotten all of the legal notes and this one still has the highlighting, so this is good. Okay, so we had stated that the committee appointments will be approved by resolution of the board by the second board meeting in December or soon thereafter. And now that our inaugural meeting is at mid-November, that will give us two meetings before the committee appointments need to be approved. Um, and for any committee struck after that time, um, the committee appointments would be struck after that. And here, we had to take this out by legal recommendation that a trustee who has not been appointed as a committee uh, member may attend a committee meeting and there's no stipulation that there must be fewer than six present because the trustee will identify themselves as a non-member and not participate in the discussion except at the invitation of the committee chair. And this was reviewed by our legal legal eagle, Gillian Tuck-Katana. Was that a question that just popped up?
Uh, no, it wasn't. It was direction that if people's links are misdirected, please refresh the committee agenda and you should be in a good place.
Okay, perfect.
Can I interject? Amy, would you like to share your screen so that we're all looking at the same thing?
I thought I was.
No.
I'm so sorry. It's because I'm doing too many of them tonight, I guess. Here we go. There we go. You see it now?
Yes.
Okay. The next area for a change was understanding committees and we've highlighted this one. That the term of the chair and vice chair shall expire annually or upon the dissolution of the committee. Um, and that the chair and vice chair of the standing committee is is determined as part of striking committee process. Because that has been our practice, but it wasn't in our GP before. Uh, we did have to make some changes under working groups, which we've formerly called subcommittees. We wanted to add in the restrictions regarding private meetings and that working groups shall work in public and have the agendas posted. Um, and that the public is more than welcome to view any working group meetings that occur. And leave, yes, here we've added in notice of meetings. That notice of committee meetings and their agendas will be posted on the website, you know, thus in forty-eight hours before the time of the meeting. This is shorter than for a board meeting and this is partly because um, committee meetings are quite often arranged at the end of one meeting for the next meeting and sometimes a committee will want to get together more than once in a week if they're trying to get through the work. And so forty-eight hours in consultation with manager Carrillo, it was deemed that forty-eight hours was appropriate. Um, and for the committee agendas to not be amended after their delivery except to deal with an urgent matter or a non-material matter. And that the amendment to an agenda must pass by two-thirds majority of those present and voting or quorum, whichever is greater. And that the minutes of the meeting will reflect the fact of the amendment and why the agenda was amended. And then these are just the terms of reference and the agendas, which see no changes um, since the legal review and our revision history at the end. And I, yes, I see a hand up. Andrea?
Thanks, Amy. Uh, so my question is actually um, about the four-two-one, the working groups and the fact that working groups are subject to the requirement that meetings must be open to the public unless the matter is under, you know, the specific regulation. Um, how does that work operationally? Like, how if a member of the public is interested in attending or observing a working group, how does, how do they go about doing that?
Well, the agendas will be publicly posted on the website forty-eight hours ahead of the meeting and we will have, I guess if they want to contact the board and say, I would like to attend that meeting, then they'll be given a link. I don't think we would share the link just generally. I don't think we would share the link just generally because it's on Google meets and, and that makes it a little bit more awkward. But we would definitely, if anyone wanted to attend, share the link. Donna.
Thank you. My question is in the same section. The new paragraph that says the Standing Committee shall provide updates and reports to the board on behalf of the working group. And the Standing Committee may also provide opportunities for feedback at committee, the whole board meetings. I am struggling with that because it means that if you happen to, so much will come under one Standing Committee. And so people may be on that working committee and doing all the work of it, but the reports will never have their names and that's an optics piece for me. I truly believe the people that are doing the work should have their names on the report. So I will be honest with you, that is a section that I am struggling with significantly.
I, I believe that then all the names of persons in the working group are included in the report.
As a follow-up, there's a very, very big difference in having your name somewhere in a report and having your name at the bottom. Trustee so-and-so as presented by. There's a very, very big difference in those optics. And I, I just, I don't believe it's fair and I'm really, really uncomfortable with this.
Okay, we can change that. That's not an issue.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's not an issue. Tanya.
Uh, yeah, I, I think this is further to Andrea's question about logistics for the public to attend. I think we had some preliminary conversations with Jean Carrillo as to how to accomplish that and how to, to notify the public. So I think that's still a working piece as to how that might be accomplished. Not to put Jean on the spot, but in case Jean wanted to add anything to that point.
Uh, thank you, trustee Rocha. Yes, so the meeting notice includes the date, time, and generally the location of that meeting. The committee members are also identified on that agenda or would be identified on the agenda, which would also speak to the earlier comment about visiting trustees who may want to join so that there's a clear indication of which members are participating members versus visiting members, for example. So if the public were to view an agenda in which to participate, then there's, you know, there's both the date, the time, the location, as well as the committee members that may be contacted. You know, should there, should there be a need to, to receive the location details so that they can participate? And the meeting notice provisions, I believe, indicate that the agenda would be published on the website. So there will be some changes perhaps to where the committee agendas will be posted. So we'll provide more clarity once those details are worked out.
Does that answer your question? Or does that help provide more clarification? Andrea?
That is perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Joanna?
Yes, I'm wondering if I could get some clarity around the participation piece of the public in a working, working group meeting. Would they be allowed to, you know, actively participate, collaborate, or are they just there to witness?
They're there to witness and they, they can, we can have an item on the agenda for public questions. Yeah, but yeah, not, not participate. It would be like sitting in the gallery during a meeting where they don't participate in the meeting other than as spectators. But that they would have the opportunity to ask questions and sometimes the questions would be really shining a light on something that perhaps we hadn't considered. And so would be most, most welcome, absolutely. Leah.
Hello, everyone. Um, so can I just get a little bit more clarity? The working group, where are we publishing the meetings? So if they're
On the website.
So on virtual, so how, on, where will it come? Where are the working group meetings? Where will we see it and how will it be identified?
On, on the board calendar?
Yes.
And under the board tab.
So who's going to update the, the website? Whose role will it be? Is this a staff role?
Yes.
What, and, and so what is the mechanism by way we like, obviously, you know, when we have board meetings, we have to give the public so much notice. What is the parameters for public notice for the working group?
It's detailed down here. And I'll let manager Carrillo speak to that, but there's the notice of meeting section right there.
So that is committee meetings, which a committee whole, but you mean, so like we call them working group committee meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the, no, they're working groups. They're not committees, but this, the the GP is all about committees and appointments and working groups are a subset of a committee. So, yeah.
If I may, um, just to provide further clarification, the legal review of the governance procedure and the interpretation of committees in the Education Act is that working groups are a mechanism whereby trustees materially advance the business of the board. So they're working on something that is the business of the board, therefore they're, they are a committee by another name. That was the legal opinion in reading this governance procedure. So the notice of meetings provision, it says notice of committee meetings. If for greater clarity, we include working groups, that's certainly possible. And in terms of the notice provisions, this is a similar mechanism that we use for committee of the whole as well as the board meetings where the Chair would provide the Director's Office as the Secretary of the Board through myself, the agenda, and then that would be posted to the website. So that's the mechanism that, that happens through. The forty-eight hours is the notice to the public, certainly if there's an agenda that's coming well before that and the Chair is aware, you can reach out to myself to, to make those arrangements.
And thank you for clarifying the difference there, Leah. I added and working group because you're quite right, it wasn't speaking to the working groups.
Um, so just as a follow-up, please, may I? So this practice, I mean, we have not done, working groups have been, you know, engaging and meeting. Mind you, it's on my calendar, but it wouldn't be public. So this notion of, you know, we, we should make sure that the public is aware that this is, this will be a new practice for us.
Yes, very much so, and one that I welcome. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, everyone. Oh, Tracy.
Yes, so I just wanted to, to summarize some of the, a good chunk of the questions were about how to operationalize this. And it sounds like, you know, in terms
An admin procedure might be needed?
Maybe. Um, it would be great for transparency purposes. And then the other piece that I heard goes back to Donna's comment. And I think then, based on your response, that when this comes to the, the board meeting next week, that, that section will have some edits, but other than that, I don't, yeah, that's the one. But other than that, there weren't any other edits that we should expect, if I'm correct.
Right, I'll, I'll actually add that paragraph right now.
No worries. I just wanted to summarize and make sure I didn't forget anything.
Not getting the right word there. Leave it with me and I'll, and I'll get the right word as I know what I want to put there. I just don't have the right word. Okay. So I've started the sentence. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, excellent. And we're all back together again. So thanks a lot for stick handling all of those pieces. And thanks to Jean as well for your role in, in bringing it all together. It'd be good to consider those for approval at the next board meeting. So we are up to item three-point-four-point-two, which is the Director's Performance Review Committee. And my understanding is that this is just, this is a process and timing piece. So that'll be described by Margo and Andrea and maybe others. Go ahead.
Okay, so as you're all aware, I sent an email out last week recognizing that we have to get our Director's Performance Review done by early November. So I sent an email asking for participation. We need at least four other, or four other trustees to support Andrea and I in moving forward. So a big thanks and shout out to Jean, Tanya, Kelly, Amy, and Tracy, who all put up their hands, but I know that you will all be involved regardless. So I'm going to share my screen because Andrea very kindly organized a chart to kind of give us an idea of where the timing is. So I've also created a file that has all the documents, but that file is only shared amongst the eleven of us. No one else has access to that file with the Director's Performance materials inside of it. But this kind of gives you an idea of where we stand. Really what we want to start with is for Curtis to have a look through the goals that he established for himself and create a self-evaluation of those goals, how he felt he had done. The next step will be our own feedback and assessment of those goals and moving forward from there. So what really I encourage you to do, and I'm going to pass it over to Andrea for a little bit, is to really familiarize yourself with the information that is in the file. Curtis, I know, has started to look at his goals that he's set for himself back when he started back in September. And we're just really moving through with that. At our next board meeting, we will probably have a private session where we as trustees can begin to take a look at our next steps. Andrea, can I ask you if there's anything else you want to add?
Um, the, the chart that I made, sort of the project management chart, that is sort of my best guess and you can see that we don't hit that November the first because the report will not quite hit it. But I think we're doing the best we can in the circumstances that we have right now in trying to, you know, carve out time to be able to do this.
Amy.
Thanks for this. It's an ambitious goal to get it done. And I know that it's all right to have it come on the ninth, even though that's a special board meeting. As long as it's included in the private session agenda for that meeting, it'll be fine. So, and it would be a really nice way to finish the term. Thank you.
Yeah, it's important. There are trustees like myself that will definitely not be here. And so it's important that this task be completed before the end of our term.
Great. So does anybody have any questions? I know Curtis, I've already sort of reminded him to have a look through his goals and I'm sure he has started and is on route to, to writing his reviews. As I said, for everybody else involved, have a look through the file. There is another piece of information that Tracy created, but I'm not able to put it into this file because of sharing permissions. So that will be in there as well, which is basically the same idea, but it just lays things out a little bit differently. And thank you, everybody, for your support.
Okay, everybody, that takes us to the end of item three-point-four-point-two and we're nicely about halfway through our meeting. So I'm going to suggest, yep, Curtis, you're good?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. So it's seven-twenty-five by my clock. If we could reconvene at seven-thirty-five so people can have a quick break and we'll come back to the meeting and pursue the second half of our agenda. Okay, excellent. Welcome back, everybody. We are now at item 3.5, which is end of term reports. And I want to first say thank you to everyone for creating these reports. And there's a question, which is why do these? And there's a couple of reasons, maybe more. The first one is to, as we near the end of our term, to be able to reflect on all of the body of work that has been deemed as important and a priority and that has been completed. So it's a bit of a celebration. And then secondly, it's to create an information repository and institutional memory as we move forward into another new term. So the idea is that if people can briefly present the highlights of their reports, and then the idea is that they would be passed through with any revisions that are required as a result of the discussion tonight, that those would then be passed through to a board meeting. So they would also make it into a board package and be available with the links in that regard for members of the community. So it's again, another kind of evolution and piece of transparency and again, creating that institutional memory. So, and I do appreciate that, you know, a lot of time likely went into all of these to find the links and all of that. So much appreciated. We'll dive right in. As you know, we have a couple of kinds of committees. One is a standing committee and the other one, ad hoc committees. So we'll start with the standing committee reports, and there's three of them. The first one up is the Governance Committee. Over to you.
Thank you, Tracy. I'll speak and Amy, if I miss anything, please, I'm a visitor. Please jump in anytime. So I'm going to share a screen to make this a little bit easier. And, oh, my button. Let's see if I can share. Hopefully, I'm sharing the correct tab. Okay, I think I did it right. Okay, so this is the Governance Standing Committee. So thank you, Tracy, for creating these templates for us. I agree, it's important to write down what has transpired and so that the new term of the new trustees coming, I guess, in a month's time, will know what has happened and what the goals are. So the Governance Standing Committee was established in early 2021. At the end of last year, we did present and share a report outlining what the committee accomplished in 2021. And just for clarity, the scope of the Governance Standing Committee is to look at board policies, governance procedures, and the Board Governance Bylaw. What we've accomplished since February of 2021 is listed here. Policies have been updated, some have been rescinded. We've identified some as having a ministry moratorium. And we've also created several new policies and governance procedures. What was important, and I'd like to credit Andrea for this, is a policy review schedule that lists all of our policies and when they are due for review. And it also indicates who is the lead person to have that policy updated. What I've done in this report is I've included the 2021 report that was shared last year. And I've also included this year's report, which goes into a lot of detail as far as all of the work that the committee has accomplished. And to, Donna, your point about naming all people, whenever there was a working group or subcommittee created, the names have been included in this report. So names will be mentioned there. As far as next steps, where we are, we have broken this report into the trustee-led reports versus staff-led. I've put staff-led here so that the new Governance Standing Committee has it on their radar. But as far as trustee-led policies and procedures that are either in progress or that are outstanding are as follows. Amy did speak to the Board Committee's Policy and GP earlier tonight, as well as the delegations to the Board Policy and GP. We hope to have those adopted next week. So hopefully, I can remove them from this report. The other ones are Filling a Trustee Vacancy Health and Safety Policy. We hope to have the Filling a Trustee Vacancy GP make its first appearance next week and hopefully having that approved before the end of this term. And the last one is the Health and Safety Policy, which has been received back from legal with comments. So we will be working with Superintendent Tahat to hopefully have that submitted or final approval before the end of this term. What was on our radar to get accomplished this year, but time ran out. And we want to ensure that these two items get top priority with the next standing committee. That is the Trustee Code of Conduct. It needs to be reviewed, as well as the policy and procedure framework. I've left staff-led here for your review. Now, our recommendation for the committee's policy is that we do need to state whether or not the Governance Standing Committee should continue. And it is our recommendation that the next term of trustees just continue with the Governance Standing Committee as governance is a key function of the Board of Trustees. As far as goals, we will be updating the goals depending on what we can get accomplished in the next few weeks so that the new term has a clear understanding of what's left to do. I do have a question for Amy because she just presented the committee's policy. And that is, Amy, do we need to make a motion to renew the Governance Standing Committee? Or is it just, it will continue to exist unless we say otherwise?
Yeah, unless otherwise stated by resolution of the board, it will expire. So resolution of the board should happen at the first meeting of the new term after inauguration.
Okay, so I, so do, and I'll speak for the Governance Committee, as well as the next two standing committees, the Trustee Professional Development and Board Self-Assessment. So do all three standing committees have to submit three separate reports for resolution? Or could we just do one report with?
I could see the reasoning and logic for having three separate reports, but I think it would be greatly simplified to have one report with three separate recommendations and pass each recommendation individually, not as a group, so that the decisions are made on a case-by-case basis. But I don't think we need three separate reports, probably just three sections of the report so that each of the standing committees can give the details as to the justification for continuing. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. So on behalf of the Governance Committee, I do recommend for the, another Governance Committee to be established for the next term. And I'll include that in a report for resolution. And if anyone has any questions, thank you. Margo?
Yeah, I think, again, thank you so much. I know how much work the two of you have put into this and all the people who've kind of popped in and out of the different committees, me being one of them. I'm just trying to recall when we had Jillian come in and speak to us. And I think she spoke to the idea of a Governance Committee. I'm just not sure, I'm just trying to recollect. And I'm just wondering if either of you recall what her advice was on that.
I could speak to that. She was very much in favor of the continuation of the Governance Standing Committee because it is the work of trustees. Governance is our dog. But we do have the Governance Procedure, which says that we have to justify the renewal of all standing committees annually. So I don't mind doing that. It's not a difficult justification, I don't think.
Okay. Kelly?
I have some concerns about renewing the Governance Standing Committee. Just in the fact that I recall Jillian saying that governance is the purview of all trustees. And therefore, to me, that would mean all trustees should be part of it, and it's not a committee. So like Committee of the Whole would be the governance piece where we would create the subcommittees. And I just have some concerns about two or three or four or five people being on the Governance Committee and controlling all the other committees. And you guys have done an amazing job this year, and thank you so very much for everything you've done. I just, it depends on who would be there and how it works, but I just have some great concerns about renewing it.
While governance is the purview of all trustees, all trustees must vote on every piece of work that is brought forward by the standing committee. So it isn't, and all trustees get a voice at Committee of the Whole because every single piece of work produced by the standing committee comes to Committee of the Whole, as well as board. So it's presented to the Board of Trustees three times minimum, plus it gets a legal review. So many of our items have come four and five times before the entire board. And nothing gets passed without a board motion with a majority of trustees voting in favor. So while I understand your concern, I respectfully disagree because nothing happens without the board's consent.
If there aren't any questions, Tracy, I'll defer back to you.
Okay, thank you. And this decision will be in the purview of the next group of trustees. So at this point, I guess, we're just talking about the inclusion in the report about a suggestion for So at this point, I guess, the, we're just talking about the inclusion uh, in the report about a suggestion for, for consideration. Okay. So, thank you very much, what a bunch of things that have been done. Um, next, we can move to the Trustee Professional Development Standing Committee Report. And, okay, excellent.
Amy, if you're talking, you're muted.
Thanks, Margot.
My apologies. I am so accustomed to being told that my mic is hot, so. My apologies. So this uh, report is presented on behalf of the Trustees Professional Development Planning Standing Committee, um, of which we have five members. It was myself, Donna Danieleas Vice Chair, Jean Grey, Tanya Rocha, and um, Margot Shuttleworth. This is our end-of-term report, but because um, we have only existed for a very brief time, I've gone back to the entire history. Um, so that all of it can be accounted for. Um, we, before we were a Standing Committee, we were an ad hoc committee, and that was created May 6th, 2020 by Board Resolution. The Standing Committee was created nearly a year later, on April 21st, 2021, again by Board Resolution. Scope of the Committee, um, and I uh, quoted all of the terms of reference here. Um, shall not exceed five members, and that members are determined during the annual striking committee process. And that subcommittees um, may be required, and which will be open to trustees who are not sitting on the Standing Committee itself. We will report to the Board at least twice a year with recommendations for consideration. Um, and that the multi-year plan identifies key focus areas for the whole district school board. And that trustees require professional development in order to effectively govern in alignment with the multi-year plan. As well as on a day-to-day basis. And so professional development opportunities focused specifically on the role of trustee have also been undertaken. These are the um, things that have been planned in the last two years. Uh, starting with our facilitated session on hiring a director. And then a couple of months later, um, we took a virtual tour of the Mohawk Institute, Institute Indian Residential School and had the question and answer session there, which was quite informative. Uh, from there, we went into a four-part series on anti-racism in leadership. Um, then we completed the DISC Part Two, which was facilitated by Judith Nyman. Um, and then this year, we have had Communications facilitated by Sherry Graydon, Boardroom Decorum and Roberts Rules of Order facilitated by Lori Lekanuck, and Governance and Operations facilitated by Catherine Rasso. Um, we do have in our trustees' expenses Governance Procedure that there will be annual Boardroom Decorum and Roberts Rules of Order training for Boards of Trustees. And so our next steps, we recommend that this occur by the end of January 2023. Uh, we also recommend that um, should the Trustees Professional Development Planning Standing Committee continue to exist, that they survey trustees um, to determine the priorities for professional development as soon as possible in the new term. And that they plan at least two other professional development workshops in 2023. And similarly to the uh, previous Standing Committee, we recommend that this committee continue to exist. Um, oops, and there's typo, Professional Development. It's a key function of Boards of Trustees. Um, I can think of um, no better way for ensuring that all trustees are receiving um, the professional development required in order to function as a Board. If there are any questions? Seeing no questions, so I will stop sharing. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So next, we'll do Board Self-Assessment. And I would like, I can start that one off, and in brief, uh, that Standing Committee, the most recent group, is Donna, myself, Andrea, and Margot. And back in 2018, we undertook a pilot in 2018, 2019 to put in place a self-assessment um, process. And this is all in keeping with best practices outlined by um, Good Governance for School Boards by the OESC and OPSA. Uh, in particular, there's a Module 21 related to Board Self-Assessment and Good Governance. And in that module, it uh, speaks to things such as, you know, good governance doesn't happen by accident. Uh, and effective Boards of Trustees develop processes that contribute to the continuous improvement of their governance. So on that basis, we carried out a couple of years of pilot processes where we uh, developed a, a survey that was um, circulated to all trustees. The responses were then uh, analyzed and formed the basis of a set of goals uh, moving forward for the next year related to governance. So uh, if we look most recently, in March of this year, um, we presented a report that was unanimously supported, and it's a Terms of Reference for this new uh, Standing Committee. Um, we also pulled together a repository of past surveys and other best practices that we had uh, drawn on, so future groups can, can take a look at those if they want to move beyond the survey, for example. Then if we go down a little bit more, we also developed for ourselves a set of end-of-term governance goals. Uh, and I'm pleased to report that in the, for the most part, they have all been fulfilled. So just quickly, the Chair does at the start of each Board meeting draw attention to uh, our Bylaw and our Code of Conduct. And again, this just speaks to uh, Board Decorum and all of these kind of rules and frameworks that we have for ourself, ourselves uh, individually and collectively, so we can move through all of our business. Uh, next, through the Chair and Vice Chair, work with the Director to seek inclusion of financial implications for, for action Board Reports. And I'm pleased to report that uh, through the Director and um, working with Jean, that this practice is something that will roll out near the start of the new term. So that should provide uh, trustees with some uh, great uh, information and certainly tie back to that budget responsibility. The second one that's in the same vein is for uh, any reports that are coming forward for action to include multi-year plan connections, because, you know, we go to all of this effort to uh, consult broadly, as we did this last time around. Our work should be as focused as possible on that multi-year plan. So again, uh, similar concurrence uh, through the Director's Office, for which I and we are grateful. Um, next, initiate a working group to develop a Director's Hiring Procedure. And that work uh, has been started and should be completed in the next short while. Um, through the Promotions and Onboarding Subcommittee, create onboarding resources for trustees for the next term. And this has been, has been accomplished. Uh, so yeah, thanks to that group. Um, for doing that. It's also the subject of another report, so we won't go there. Uh, similarly, through the Onboarding Subcommittee, uh, post and promote information about the role of the trustee, and that has also been completed. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, we have also completed our Terms of Reference. So where does that leave us? Uh, three things. Firstly, that near the start of the new term, consider renewal by motion of the mandate of the Standing Committee. And then if that happens, um, and even if not, consider development of a new rules of the road as an agreement between trustees about how they'll conduct themselves. You remember, we did that right at the very beginning, and I always hear Heather's comment about um, start the way we'd like to finish. And Heather, if I, if I said that wrong, just jump in. But basically, it speaks to setting your course early on in a good way and always doing that.
Yeah, it's begin as you plan to continue, same thing.
Yes.
But yeah, and stay in your own lane.
There you go. And then um, near the end of the 2022, 2023 school year, so the new group of trustees will have some uh, experience together as a group. Initiate the next self-assessment survey, or whatever mechanism they chose to adopt as per the Terms of Reference. And develop a new set of governance goals for the next year. So other committee people or any questions in general? Okay, excellent. So like these other things, these are new things that we've started. So um, it's, it's kind of exciting uh, to look back on all this stuff. So we'll move then to Board Ad hoc Committees, uh, and go to 3.5.2.1, which is the uh, Trustee Promotion and Onboarding. Tanya, go ahead.
Sorry, I've been clicking on the wrong computer, trying to put my hand up. So my question is, if Board Self-Assessment is a recommended best practice, um, and I fully support it, um, I, I, and I'm, I don't expect an answer, I'm just throwing it out there. If it is recommended best practice and it's something we do, why, why do we need to, you know, approve the Committee again for the, for the next term? Um, you know, can we do the opposite whereby we'll keep having it until such time it's deemed not a good fit or not a best practice anymore? And I'm looking at it from an efficiency perspective. Um, if it's, if it's a best practice, let's keep doing it until otherwise noted. Uh, so I'm just throwing it out there and um.
Go ahead, Andrea. And I suspect Amy might have an answer too, that links back to the um, the piece of work that we just looked at where it's uh, it's noted that they all have to be, the mandates reviewed at the, yeah. But Andre, Andre is first, go ahead, and then we'll jump over to you, Amy.
Okay.
So um, we used to do things like that, uh, and uh, so we used to have a Transportation Committee and uh, all these other Committees, and they just, because there was no assessment process at the end or at the beginning of a term to say, you know, we're going to continue with this. It was just assumed, and we were just kind of ended up going through the motions, and it took us a while to uh, come to the point where this isn't working. So if you have uh, the opportunity to uh, you know, yearly uh, or by term or wherever, um, to say, hey, this needs to continue, it actually is, it's, it has intent. And then you can assess uh, whether it's, at that time, whether it's going to move forward or not. Otherwise, I'm, I think you just end up uh, continuing because it's always been there. And I don't think that's a good way to go. I think that that loses efficiency.
And I would just add to that, that given that we are doing an annual um, report of the work done by each Standing Committee, um, I think those, those um, end-of-term reports can, can be referenced in the motions to justify continuing them um, in the, in the next term or in the next year. Um, and discussion regarding whether or not they've provided sufficient justification can occur at the Board Table, and then we've got that complete transparency there. Um, and I do recall um, Gillian Takutarna um, advising that we review them on an annual basis to determine whether or not they were needed. And, and Andrea is quite right, we used to have five different Standing Committees that really didn't seem to have a focus. And um, so it was a good thing when we took a break for a couple of years, and then we came back and said, but wait a minute, we actually need some of these? And, and so we, we developed terms of reference and mandates, and um, I think we're in a much better place now than we were. And so, um, yeah, I, I like the idea of doing an annual check-in and, and say, you know, here's what we've done. And we'd like to continue, and what's the will of the Board?
Thank you, thank you both.
Okay, awesome. Great discussion. Uh, so trustee promotion and onboarding, we've made the jump now to the different set of different type of Committees, which are the ad hoc Committees, which are um, bound by a scope of work, and when that scope is over, they are done. Go ahead.
Hi. Okay, so uh, this was a, a great Committee, uh, consisting of Kelly and Donna and Jean. And Tanya joined us for a very short time as well. And uh, we did a lot of work in the, in the spring, um, and before the spring, actually, uh, around what the role of the trustee was. And I actually have, uh, I've, it's been great that during this election cycle, that I've been able to point to uh, that for people to uh, understand, because um, you know, in, in my seat, uh, there are seven people running. So uh, I, it helps me from having to explain over and over again what the role is. Um, so that's, that's readily available on the website, and that took a lot of work from Committee Members. Thank you very much to all of them. Uh, and then for the onboarding, um, there are some uh, things that are in place that will continue. Uh, the Trustee Assistant, HSB Trustee Assistant Intranet Website uh, is just a repository uh, for really links to be able to do things, but uh, certainly uh, would help new trustees uh, getting acquainted with things they need to do um, in the systems. And as well, the new trustee program, uh, Google Classroom, uh, again, another kind of repository. This links to those modules that uh, you were referring to, Tracy, uh, from the OESC and other places. There's videos in there. Um, all about, you know, how to use the system, how to do expense reports, how to do all sorts of things. And uh, um, Manager, General Manager Correlo has been added as a teacher for that one. So hopefully, uh, as things need to be uh, updated, if there's new things, new procedures that trustees need to be aware of, they can be uh, put into that system. Um, it doesn't happen too often, but uh, it is a good uh, place to uh, to, as a central place for people to look. And then of course, as the new uh, term begins, the staff have put forward and have started uh, working on uh, confirming uh, PD for the uh, new set of trustees, uh, onboard governments, parliamentary procedure, uh, operations, uh, Board Operations and Trustee Operations. So uh, you can see in the report, uh, one date has been confirmed, but the other ones will be confirmed. confirmed in the future. And of course, it'll all depend on who's sitting around the table and what their availability availability is too. These are very important sessions that every new trustee should definitely be part of. And returning trustees, great refresher. So it, as I, as I mentioned, it was a great group to work with. And I'm glad that we were able to get this work done. It feels very satisfying as a trustee that's leaving the board that there is information there for continuing and new trustees moving forward. Are there any questions? Margot?
Not so much a question, but a thank you. You know, I think the work you've done, the information you've put up on the board website to allow the public to get that insight has been great. And again, the onboarding pieces, I think, is really valuable. You know, as you said, I think it's nice, not only for the new trustees, but for refresher for the people that have been around for a bit. It's always nice to have those pieces there. So I just, I want to thank all of you for all the work you do. That's great. So thank you.
That's great. Yeah, it was, as I said, it was a good collaborative group. We got lots of work done.
Okay. Excellent. So what's next here is student trustee onboarding.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Um, perhaps I'll start and my colleague Joanna can can jump in. I'm really glad we did this process, by the way, like I love seeing everybody's work. It just makes me so proud to see how much we covered in such a short time. And it's just, it's actually been really nice. And so kudos to everybody around the table. Just before we start, this really is the student trustee mentor ad hoc committee report. The onboarding piece is within it. So just to just to maybe name that a little bit more appropriately. In my calendar today, I had a little quote and I thought I might start with with reading it to you because it really resonated with me and it kind of like, it just inspired me on this on this process. The quote is by Maya Angelou. And it, the quote is, "We delight in the beauty of the butterfly, but rarely admit the changes it has gone through to achieve that beauty." And I think it's a really good metaphor for the work that we've done because when Joanna and I were like detailing the journey that this this report took us on, it was all over the place. There were so many outcomes to this one little motion that we were kind of both, you know, we we just had a moment where we had to sit back and think and say, oh, my gosh, we got lots done here. So I'll just do, speak to a couple of things and then I'll hand it over to Joanna. So this ad hoc committee was actually originally started to look at just the student trustee mentor terms of reference and how it connected to the student trustee policy. And oh, my gosh, it, the outcome of this initialization motion took us in a in a whole host of directions. I'll let you read the report. You'll notice we put an appendix timeline in the report that documents the people who were in the in our original committee, who were Joanna, Donna, Margot, Tanya, and our student trustees at the time, Casey and Vandy. And it takes us through all the things that we connected with, which there were many. So we started with a student trustee mentor terms of reference. And we, you know, and I'm glad we are addressing this because we needed to find a host for this piece. We need to find a landing page for this terms of reference. And I think we've so far got it in our board committee's governance procedure, which is awesome. But it certainly needs to be, you know, stationed somewhere for the next board. From our student trustee terms of reference, we developed the student trustee onboarding piece, which we have used. From there, we went to review the student trustee policy and broke it out into three components. The policy, the governance procedure, and the trust, the student trustees elections administrative procedure. Well, that wasn't our purview. Joanna and I had the courtesy to sit on with staff to 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 work on that and to update it into a a good place. So you, I'll let, you know, all the links are here, which is, which is cool. I think the my takeaway for, you know, what I would hope for this information piece is that there is a commitment to ongoing improvement on looking at, you know, how we can make the onboarding for the student trustees better. I don't know if they're still on the Oh, yes, I see Ethan here. You know, we, 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 Joanna and I meaningfully asked them, you know, how can we adapt and improve things for the future? And I would hope that this, that sort of approach continues so that we can center the student trustees in the students in our work. So I'll leave it to Joanna. I hope I didn't capture everything you wanted to say, Joanna, but I'll, I'll hand it over to you. And I have to say, sorry, I didn't know how to upload it. Like, I'm assuming everybody is seeing this. So I didn't put it on our screen.
Yeah, thanks, Leah. I believe you covered it all very well. This, this, the role of the student trustee mentor, for those of you who have done this in the past, I know certainly Donna has, is is a very involved role and very connected, not just with the student trustees, but there are connections to the Senate and their connections to the Senate staff advisors. And so it was important to kind of document that and use the the onboarding piece to also highlight the need to do some orientation and onboarding for any new staff advisors in, you know, the the work that they will be doing and where the where we kind of connect and link up. So anyway, I believe they've done their own piece as well, which is great. And I think that's it for us. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? Go ahead, Ethan.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say how thankful I am for the work that both trustee Reynolds and trustee Oliver has done with certainly my development and being comfortable to share not only my opinions, but the opinions of the more than 60,000 students at the board level. It's through their work over the past few years that I'm confident speaking here today and being able to lead the student senate. So a lot of their work has been really fundamental in supporting student voice and making sure it's centered at the board table. So it's it's really fundamental. I just want to make sure they're they're thanked for all the great work they've done.
And that is one of the most meaningful thanks that you can receive. Thanks, Ethan. Okay. So we'll go to the Inspire Awards. Now, this is a bit of a a different one. This is an annual report, kind of appears a bit out of sequence here. But Andrea and I are the coordinators of Inspire this year. And you'll remember that one of the things we've set for ourselves is that we provide an annual report. So we did a bit of a hybrid. We created a history document, and then we also included the annual piece in here as well. And that takes care of the last school year. So this has been the awards program started back in May 2016. And hundreds of these awards have been given out at board meetings, in school buildings and other places of work, really at the wherever the recipient would like to receive the awards. And of course, sadly, over the last couple of years, that has involved online and through the mail kind of thing. So this is an awards program that is done in collaboration with Susan Thrasher in the director's office, communications with Heather and everyone in that group, it really, and senior team, it takes a whole bunch of people to make this happen every month. And so what you see when the awards are presented are really the tip of the iceberg. So key happenings in the last little while, we have created an Inspire Awards policy and governance procedure, and staff also created an administrative procedure. And again, that's in recognition of the partnership that it that is ongoing in this regard. According to our procedure, we're to create that report each fall to let people know what's going on and any program enhancements. And Susan, Andrea and I met recently, and I believe we've updated the committee with the planned improvements, which are updates to the evaluation guide posted online and the nomination form, including such things as encouraging people to provide specific examples in their submission. That will make it easier to to provide these awards because we want to maintain the integrity of the awards at the same time, recognize all the great things that are happening. So for 2021, 22, about 100 people were given Inspire Awards. And those are both for individual and collective efforts. Recipients came from schools, from facilities, so head office, as well as in the community, all with very diverse roles, be it volunteers, teachers, EAs, custodial staff, crossing guards, et cetera, many, many people. The recipients list is linked in the report, so people can go in and have a look. And certainly, we wanted to just express our gratitude to people who took time to make the nominations. Again, to the recipients and for the collaboration between trustees and and staff. So Andrea, anything to add or any questions from anybody?
I have nothing to add, except that Tracy really wrote this report.
Well, it was, as Leah said, great to go back and recreate our history, past and present, past and recent. Okay, so seeing no questions, we can move on to the Reimagine Forward report. And I can get that started. That was an ad hoc committee with Andrea, Joanna, Leah, Margot and myself. And I don't think we quite set the world record for the number of meetings that we had, but it was, it was getting there. And also, this was a collaboration with senior staff and the communications group. So here's what we did. We wrote some reports and letters to the ministry that outlined the opportunity that we saw to really harness the disruption of the pandemic to look ahead and do good and innovative things for publicly funded school in Ontario. At first, we called it Build Back Better, but that was being already used by other people. So we turned it to reimagine forward. We requested that the minister create a stakeholder group to look at these opportunities. But recognizing that that wasn't happening, we made our own opportunities and we had hundreds of people with diverse voices that came together to look at the question, what are the big moves needed to reimagine education? We piloted a online platform, Bang the Table, and it was called engagehdsb.ca. Approximately over 3,000 people visited and a couple of people were really actively engaged. And what was great here is that people really did have strong and diverse views. And they used the opportunity to kind of debate and discuss. We came together and had a community meeting. And people reported that they they felt heard, which was great. And then the next steps, a report from the director is anticipated shortly regarding potential policy and or opportunities related to the outcomes of that engagement. We've provided for everybody kind of like an open data scenario, so people can go in and and relook at that data at any point in time as they look at. You know, recognizing that was one, a snapshot in time coming out of the the pandemic, it did provide some useful information about where, what people were thinking, what the frustrations were and what the opportunities were. And I'll just, this is a personal kind of reflection and we tried to pursue that process using appreciative inquiry. So to come at it from a positive perspective, what are the big moves needed to reimagine education? And I will just, my observation is that that was really, really hard that the pandemic and other weighty topics that are out there have taken, taken a toll. And but I I hope this process is an example where we can come together and talk about the hard stuff, all with a focus on on students. So that's all for me. I will turn it over to other committee members or or any questions. Go ahead, Margot.
Yeah, so again, one similar to what Andrea said last time, you were certainly the lion's share of the work for this project. I'm really looking forward to and hoping we're able to get a report back from Curtis before the end of your term. I think it's hopefully coming to the next board meeting or the first in November. Curtis?
Thank you. My picture seems to take a little while to pop up. There it is. We are, we are working on it to have it. I don't remember the exact date, Margot, but it will be before the end of the term.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no other questions, that takes us to the end of the end of term reports. So thank you very much, everyone. And I just, now, again, the idea is to package them up or pass them through to the board meeting. And I'm not anticipating that we would go through them as we just have for efficiency sake. Maybe they can be introduced as a group. And just as we did the administrative procedure update tonight, that people could could highlight any kind of key things, if any. Go ahead, Tanya.
Just for clarification, what board meeting will we be sharing these reports? Will it be October 26 or will it be November 2?
That is a fine question. And I believe if it's everybody's wish, we could do it under committee reports, which would be item 6.6 of the agenda, the public agenda of the coming meeting that they would all pass through.
I have a suggestion. Could they not be accepted through the consent agenda? Since the discussion of them has already taken place here, just to accept them through the consent agenda, that way, Since the discussion of them has already taken place here, just to accept them through the consent agenda, that way it's a quicker process.
Does anybody have any suggestions, clarifications, oppositions? Okay, so Jean Carrillo, I believe that is all doable. Kelly, go ahead.
I believe one of the items had a recommendation, so that wouldn't be able to be done through a consent agenda.
So all of the standing committees have recommendations in them, but those are they're not motions that we can pass. Those are motions that would be considered for the next group of trustees. So i.e. the renewal of the mandates of those of the standing committees, for example. So I don't think there are any that require any more decisions at this point in time. Yeah. Okay, yeah, great clarification. So then we'll, with that direction and all of that information behind us, we will move forward to item 3.6, Other Business. We have the first one, 3.6.1, School Naming and Renaming Professional Development and Next Steps. So that was done by a working group of the Governance Committee. So I'm imagining that together you will shepherd us through this next piece. And an email process piece was sent out in advance, so people would have a heads up. So I'll turn it over to the collective then.
I think it's probably simplest if we go with the process that was outlined unless someone would prefer to do it in another way. Just let every trustee speak to their views on whether or not we should continue naming schools after people as one of the options in the criteria for naming schools. And then we'll have a better sense of direction about what would come next after that. If no one objects to that, I think that might be the easiest way to get a scan of how the board as a whole feels. Leah?
Yeah, I guess my question is on this procedure that was recommended. I just wanted to reflect my understanding of what it is, that we are essentially just taking a straw poll to see whether we're all on board in the same direction that we don't have to debate. Or I, what I want to ensure is that this is not going to limit our debate or discussion on our professional development learning and perhaps new information that has come our way.
The mandate of the Naming and Renaming Working Group that was formed was to determine whether or not schools should be named after persons. And the PD that came after that motion was made and and passed to form that group was to provide more guidance to trustees around whether or not it was a beneficial, wise, good idea to continue naming schools after persons. However, anything beyond that is out of scope. So for instance, suggestions made by the delegate we had last week would be beyond scope because that wasn't in the scope of the working group. The scope of the working group was to determine whether or not schools should continue to be named for persons. And so we want to stick to the scope. Because if we go beyond scope, then what we have to do is create another working group and we're at end of term. So we do have to stick to the scope, but I don't want to curtail debate on the item that's within scope, which is whether or not to continue naming schools after persons. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to recognize our scope of debate and that this straw poll that we're just going around and talking to is, does not limit our debate. Because I'm, 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 I expect that we are going to need some space to dialogue on this particular.
Yeah, the the procedure that was outlined was that we would go around the table and then we would have debate and discussion. So why don't we let you go first then, Leah?
Well, Tanya, do you have a question?
No, I was actually going to volunteer to go first.
Go first.
Go for it.
Yeah. So based on our PD, I would like to continue to have the ability to name a school after a person. So my, my vote, not my vote, but my opinion is that to keep the policy as is.
Thank you, Tanya. Leah?
Yes, thank you. As you may have garnered from my comments, I am very much looking forward to a debate as I feel I, I support removing persons' names from any new schools going forward.
Okay, thank you. Is there a volunteer to go next or should I just go around the room? Andrea?
I would like to continue naming schools after people. And I'm, I'm more than happy to discuss that further when we have time.
Thank you. Tracy?
Thank you. So my view on this is that the status quo, as the policy is written, gives the choice. And that is what I support for, for a number of reasons. It means you don't have to name the school after a person. However, you could do so if the the criterion were fulfilled and the community was something that the community had brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Margot?
Yeah, I, I too, I think it's, for me, I think that choice should be provided. So I think that having the choice there doesn't limit you to choosing a name, but it keeps it open if there is a name. And again, as Tracy says, from the will of the community or a particular area that it needs to happen. So I, I think having that choices is where my position is.
Thank you. Joanna?
Hi. I would like to see the option to name after people removed from our policy.
Okay, thank you. Donna?
Thank you, just trying to get off mute. I would like to see it remain. I have a number of reasons for that, but I will save for the debate. But I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that this afternoon I had a conversation with Jean Grey. And Jean was rushing off to see Holton Living Foundation being celebrated with an award at a gala. And she was going to send an email, she did not. But I told her that if she did not, I would convey her thoughts, even though they are different than mine. I am in favor, Jean Grey is in not, is in favor of removing it. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure that her voice was heard, even though she's not here.
Thank you for that, Donna. That's, that's good to have that input. Heather?
Thank you. I am in favor of keeping it status quo. I believe that we should be able to have the option of naming a school after a human.
And Kelly?
I'm in favor of keeping it status quo. And part of the reasoning is the trustees who are sitting around the table are the people who are making the decision. And if they don't feel that a name is appropriate for the school, then that, then they won't choose a name that would in, for a person. And so I don't want to eliminate the possibility because there probably are some very deserving people out there that would fit the criteria that we have. But I just, but I also know that we as trustees have that ability to not name after people. So the way it is.
Thank you. And much the same as those who have spoken before me. For many of the similar reasons, I also wish to continue being given the opportunity to choose to name after a person. And I would actually suggest, though, that in the new term, we do strike a working group to look at some of the suggestions that came through our PD as well as some of the suggestions that came from our delegate last week. Because I think there was some value there. And one of the suggestions from Pardeep was that the driver for school naming perhaps should be the multi-year strategic plan. And that was making it so that we were looking for qualities and not actually specifying whether it could be a person or a place or a geographical feature or a concept, but rather representative of the multi-year strategic plan, which I thought was a very interesting way to go. Ethan?
Hi, although I don't have a actual vote in this, I would like to share that I am in favor of removing the ability to name schools after people. And I'm ready to share my thoughts on that when it comes necessary.
Thank you, Ethan. I was remiss in not asking you and Cindy if you would like to convey your opinion as well. I'm not sure, maybe Cindy's left the meeting. Okay. So now we've, we've heard from around the table, the the different views. And I'm happy to open it for debate. Is there someone who'd like to speak first? Oh, there's, trustee Wang has joined us again. Cindy, would you like to speak to your opinion about naming schools after persons? Or did you prefer not to say anything?
I'm sure. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I agree with what Ethan said. I would like to see the option to have schools named after people removed. A huge reason is because I just find it to be such a static option compared to others. But as Ethan said, I'm more than willing to share my opinion when the time comes.
Okay, thank you. Heather?
Keeping it brief, imagine another human being like Terry Fox comes around. And if we had removed, if we remove that option and not, we wouldn't be able to name a school after somebody as heroic as that, that would be really sad. And we've got community members that have a voice. And we're all about have, listening to the community voice. And they're the ones that say, you know, name it after a human. So those are my two cents worth.
Thank you. The next speaker? Andrea?
Well, most of you know my thoughts on this already. I do feel that there are wonderful people that are inspiring for our students. And right now, there is a huge gap in the diversity of schools right now in their names. And I would think it would be to, to, to draw, to draw the drawbridge now and say, you know, the names that we have now are the names we're going to stick with forever and ever, and, and that's it. I think brings huge equity issues forward. And I, I, I don't think that that's, that's right. Especially looking at a number of the, the current school names are after people who are, were named because they donated. They're, they're not even heroic in, other than they were able to parcel off some land, which is a fantastic thing to do. But there are inspiring people from diverse communities that we should be considering for our schools. And I mean, looking at, we wouldn't have named a school after Viola Desmond or Elsie McGill. And I think that those two recent names especially stick out as excellent, inspiring people. And I probably, if you talk to the students in the school, they are probably inspired by them. So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a little piece on to what Andrea just said. The, the diversity of our students. We always talk about letting the diversity of the population of our students be represented by the people in the, in the building, who, the adults in the building. And I'm thinking that might need to be extended also to how we name the school. I was shocked, well, not shocked actually, but Pardeep did give us details about, you know, we have 3% of our schools that are named after people are named after people of indigenous origin. And we didn't even ask their permission. We have 0% of our schools named for a person with a disability. We have 0% of our schools named after a person from the 2Q or 2S LGBTQ plus community. So and, and about 90% of our schools are named for white men. So I would like to see our students represented in the names of their schools. I'd like, I'd like our students to, to be proud to go to a school that speaks to them of their heritage and of who they are as people. And yeah, so that's, that was just something that flashed through my mind when Andrea spoke. And I'm also waiting for somebody else to put their hand up.
Just a point of clarification, Elsie McGill actually did have a disability as well.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for letting us know that, Andrea. Ethan?
Thank you. I think this topic is, is very robust. There's a lot of different sides that you can definitely take. And what really is the stopping point for me is that how do we ensure that these schools, that students will ultimately be going through and embracing these leaders are represented of the modern reflections of students in the HDSP? I see that the PD session with Pardeep really articulated that, you know, almost like you mentioned, Amy and Andrea, that almost all our schools are named after white men. And to me, that shows a failure of the naming system, that it's unable to keep up with the evolving diversity of HDSP students and the evolving cultures within our, in Holton. And so I, I see that as problematic as how can we aspire to have leaders that are reflective, you know, of, of the diversity of Holton? If our schools, if the naming system isn't able to keep up with that. So that's really the, the stopping point for me, that I don't believe it's able to keep up with the evolving diversity. And I think we need to, to think about how these schools, when you have predominantly white men who schools are named after, how that looks as a student, if that's your role model, if that's who your school is named after, how that impacts your potential lived experience and impacts your, your schooling. So I think there's, there's some challenges when we consider naming schools after people. But that's really my stance on it.
Thank you, Ethan. Cindy?
Thank you. Ethan once said something that really stuck out to me before. And it was that the people who are wearing the names of these schools are the students. And I agree completely with what Ethan said about how, you know, somebody that you, like a person that you choose now may not reflect the values of the community in the future. Because names are such like a static thing compared to things like, compared to things like, like the culture, cultures or geographies or just names. compared to things like, like the culture, cultures or geographies, or just names that are rooted in these types of things rather than names. And something that might be considered acceptable by us now might not be considered acceptable in the future, no matter who, like whose person and which identity, like that name is kind of connected to. It, there's just always that potential for that change in values and that change in opinion towards those names. And because students are the ones wearing those names, I think we need to be conscious of the fact that it's so hard to change these names once they are chosen. And if in the future, you know, the values that are being held by the community and the opinion that is being held by the community towards that name shifts, it's so hard to change that name of that school and, you know, make it more, and and since like students are again, the ones wearing these names, I just think we need to be conscious of the fact that we don't want to put them in a position where they have to wear the name of a person that they no longer support because like values have shifted and opinions have shifted.
Thank you, Cindy. Joanna?
Thank you. I'm happy to wait if somebody wants to speak from another perspective.
I don't see anyone else on the speakers list.
Okay. So I, I personally view the, the custom of, or you know, naming after people as kind of an old custom, right? It's got its, its historical roots. Rich people name things they owned or built. Inventors name things after, you know, their creations or discoveries. And so, you know, the obvious thing that comes to mind is the what ifs. We, we want to mitigate the risk. And we want to protect our reputation. Humans are fallible. And, you know, there are many great people, but we only know one aspect of them. The changing demographics. The demographics will continue to change, right? In the municipality, in the town, in the school community, in the neighborhood. That'll be an ever-evolving thing. So we're looking at naming a school in perpetuity and trying to address the demographics at the time. But the school name remains, remains forever potentially. We've got, you know, many different demographics. And we have a limited number of schools. So we can't really be thinking about evening out the playing field or being representative in any way. There is the issue of community pressure and advocacy. When we put out a call for names, people automatically jump to a human name. And then they, you know, put forward people that they personally know, like cherish, whatever. And so it becomes a competition of, of assessing one person's worth and value over another. We can't do that. Okay. Equity. Yes, we've got a lot of schools named after white people. But we'll never be able to properly balance out and be equitable in our representation. So are we now looking at, you know, kind of a checkmark, right? We, we look to an identity that's not represented. And it becomes kind of like putting a checkmark, right? A name on the wall. And we feel good because somehow we're trying to balance out the, the equity piece. One piece I did gleaned from the PD that was really interesting is that equity doesn't have to be addressed by a person's name. There are different ways, you know, selecting a word that comes from a culture that's, that's predominant in the region. A word that signifies something that, you know, we all can relate to. That's, that's certainly one way of doing that. When we look at our students in the school, we, we always do want to have, you know, have them see themselves be reflected in their, in the school. And why should they be studying and, you know, spending their day in a building that's honoring a person. It's like, you know, living in their shadow, right? This is not a patron saint. This is a human being that, you know, for whatever reason, some people felt was deserving. And so the question of relevance that Ethan and Cindy speak to comes to mind because, you know, sure, that person is relevant and meaningful at the time of naming. But, you know, time passes and that meaning or relevance becomes lost. And, and kids don't identify with that person anymore and maybe not ever. And school culture. You know, we, we heard conversations that a name can bring forth culture to the school. But really it's placing the onus on the administration and the staff to think up of a culture and carry that forward. In some cases, it's easy. In some cases, it's easy, but it gets tired with time. And in some cases, it presents a real challenge. And I think, you know, in, in, when we look at many of our schools that have a, a person's name, there is no culture. It's just a human being. And I think the culture that we speak of should be consistent in all schools. And the culture is that of inclusivity, equity, safety, all students, you know, this is their second home. This is the place of learning and personal growth and development. That's the culture that we're after. And a person's name is not going to bring that. So, you know, finally, I feel like putting a name on a, on a public institution like the school is, is a form of favoritism or bestowing an honor in thinking that this person is truly deserving and worthy and is somehow better than any of the names that were submitted. And I find that very difficult and challenging. I think, you know, I, I think there are many different ways that this could be achieved. That, you know, we could, if we're thinking of the actual student, sorry, school as the campus, there are opportunities to honor and celebrate people by naming, you know, a place, whether it's a classroom, a hallway, gym, cafeteria, library, playground. And maybe those names can rotate every few years. You could bring, bring that into the academic piece and have students research a person that they're interested in and celebrate and make that part of that school culture. Hey, who are the interesting people that, you know, we want to learn? Who are the local citizens? Who are the Canadians? Who are the international people?
Joanna?
Thank you. So I think there are different ways to name and there are different ways to honor an individual.
Right. I, I do need to move on to the next speaker. Thank you, Joanna. Tracy? Can't hear you, Tracy.
Okay, I was going to make just a point about time. And Amy, you were very good at pointing that out to us earlier in the agenda. So I just would love to know your plan or the group's plans to either keep talking because we want to keep debating, which is a beautiful thing, or to, to move on. And I've heard a couple of things that are really interesting and new. And I'm not sure, you know, this policy has been an ever-evolving thing. And I am very grateful that we now have a opportunity to send it back to the drawing board if something comes up, which I think it's not going to be easy to do that, but I think it's great that that option's there. And I think, you know, Joanna raised something about, you know, words that are representative or inspirational in a certain area. I mean, I could also argue that communities change over time. So whereas maybe there's one group is there now through different gentrification processes and, and evolution, that too would change. But anyways, it doesn't take away from your point, which for me is this policy needs to evolve again, or the procedure, because right now we don't have opportunities in there. I, I don't think that idea or other ideas that came forward in the training are currently represented in there. So I know that's a new committee for another time. And I think that will also be, be worthwhile.
Thank you for that, Tracy. You've summed up some of my thoughts quite well there. Donna?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the people that spoke in opposition of the way I was thinking. I do appreciate it and I listened very carefully and, and I liked some of what I heard. I find school naming to be one of the most difficult things that we ever do because we're looking for something that will last decades after we're gone. But I have heard everyone, and I have to say, I still would like the option. I'm not saying I'll ever vote to name a school after a person again, but I'd like to have the option, as Heather said, if a Terry Fox comes along, a Viola Desmond. People that are truly, the Chris Hadfields, the David Suzuki's, the ones that, that we can really build a culture and inspire students, I think is important. What I'm hoping to see change is our naming process in the way names get to the table. And I also want to make sure, one of my absolute best experiences when I was the trustee mentor, when we were naming a school in Milton, I went to Student Senate and I said, these are the three names we're considering. What do you think? And I got feedback from all the senators and three groups of senators also delegated that, the board meeting that follow on each of the three different names to say what, why they liked each of the three different names. So to be able to get that student voice, I think we can get much more robust than it is. I think we can bring more things in. I know I would like to, to work with historical societies and suggest that they put names forward so that we have some better choices. But I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I really truly believe that the, the opportunity should be there if we do choose. We don't know 30, 40, 50 years. If we name it, you know, Pine Street, because there's pine trees. In, in 50 years, those pines are gone and we don't know. Or there's the Babbling Brook that was once there is no longer there. Or now the, and I think it's super important giving buildings and places indigenous names to mark where they stood. But we don't know what society is going to be like 30, 40, 50 years from now. So we got, we have to be careful. I see that as just as dangerous. So unless we're going to go to numbering schools, you know, elementary school number two, elementary school number three, there's no safety in it at all. And so I would like to see us keep our options open as much as possible. As I said, I don't know that I may necessarily ever vote to name a school after a person, but I certainly don't think that right should be taken away and that opportunity should be taken away. So thank you for letting me have my two cents.
Okay, so I want to wrap up after Leah and Tracy have spoken. And then I am going to suggest that we bring a motion based on what we've heard, so that we actually have something on record saying which way we think we ought to be going, rather than just going with a straw poll. I think it's really important for us to be definitive in our direction on this. And when the new term starts, if they wish to pursue this, they've got lots and lots of information to go on. And the trustees who are returning will have had the PD and can share the wisdom of the PD and the delegate that we heard last week. And so I'm going to ask Leah and Tracy to speak and then we'll have a vote.
So I guess I'd like to just start by jumping off where our student trustees had landed. And that is sort of addressing the flaw in the process. What I heard around the table and certainly in our PD was that people like to name schools to recognize people, to reward people, to reward our heroes, to inspire our students. But in this process, how do we know really is a hero to one and all? How can we, our process, apply an equity lens to that hero? What community are we going to give greater voice to? What is community? Is that the school, the parents in the school? Is it the, the municipality? Is it all of Halton? I ask this because that's a flaw in the process. In my opinion, the community should be all of Halton. When we do boundary reviews, program accommodation reviews, the, the decisions are made by all trustees around the table. And the trustees who are outside the community are very involved in the process. So I see what I had heard is that, you know, we want to give the community the greatest voice. We want to listen to a delegation. We want to hear from those, those students. Well, I think our, our, our process isn't offering equity. We have a risk going forward with omitting names. So I, I, I struggle with. I think the, the coin is you can name it after a person or not name it after a person. But the reality is our process allows us to spend that coin. And there is a risk to that. And the risk is at the taxpayer dollar. So if in time, when you need to unname that school, you do it on the back of the taxpayers. I think that you, the, the taxpayers who who have who want to know our schools can stand the test of time, will not be happy that we are moving funds to rename or unname a person that we had to name because we, the community advocated for it. That we had no sort of ability to go out into the community and ask for, you know.
You've run out of time, Leah. I'm sorry. I gave you an extra minute. We, we do have a three-minute limit. And I gave you four. If you, if you want to speak again, you can go back on the speakers list and I will let you finish. But Tracy's the second time speaker now too. Tracy, please go ahead. Tracy, you're muted.
Yeah. I said, time flies when you're having fun. And so I think my, the comment I forgot to make last time is more of an operational one, but it goes to something we said during the Inspire Awards piece, and that is the nominations are as good as the instructions that people are given. And those instructions are as good as the criteria and policy and procedures that we have in place. So I think that, again, there is an opportunity to evolve based on what we learned in PD. I still support the choice. But I also, this is a admin procedure piece that I just want to put out there is that just really looking at the information that goes out to the community in terms of what we're looking for, what the criteria are, that can maybe help to, to shape. I know we'll always get, you know, some outliers. But I think that can really kind of add some focus as well. Thanks.
And I, and I do know in the past that the various working groups have given recommendations to both Stuart and Curtis regarding administrative procedure for naming of schools. And so perhaps that's a piece that also needs work. And I'm, I'm going to let Leah finish, but I'm sorry, Joanna, we, we have gone way over time.
Okay, thank you. Before I go back in, I do want to let you know that Donna, sorry, not Donna. Donna Daniele had referenced Jean Grey's comments and she had a lot of comments. So I, I'm not going to speak to them. I know Joanna wants to. But I would like, I would just like to wrap up. So what's in a name? Everything. We, we understand that our, you know, our naming process is flawed. It does not, it does not equip us with a way forward. It is a, an approach that we take. And it, it, the outcome gets names from the community and they may not represent our students. So removing names removes that issue. There is lots of ways in which we can honor people. My recommendation obviously would be take away the names. I'm going to let it go to Joanna because I know she wants to review Jean's comments. But I'm just happy to stand on what I believe my, my ideology is here.
We, we finished now, Leah. You were the last speaker. I, I did say that, um, two, two people ago, that you would be the last speaker. So Joanna is not on the list now, and, and I did let you speak for a total of seven minutes. So, um, I'm sorry, but you spoke longer.
As I imagine, a number of us would wish to speak a second time and at length, and if we're not all going to be given the opportunity, I appreciate the way you've handled this. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Just to be clear, sorry, just to be clear, I'm not speaking for me. I was going to read out Jean's comments.
I, I under, I understand that, but we have gone way over time on this. And, and you know that, um, we still have business to attend to at this, um, meeting. So I, I would like to put forward a motion based on the comments around the table. And, um, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight trustees wishing to continue with names. Um, and five trustees wishing to remove names. So I, five, including the stu, student trustees. Yes. Um, uh, so I would like to bring forward a motion that, um, no further changes be made to the school naming and renaming governance procedure um, as a result of the work of this current working group. And that any future changes will require the, uh, creation of a new working group. Um, that makes it clear that the option isn't closed. It's just not available and as a result of this particular working group anymore, given the discussion we've had around the table. And if this gets voted down, then, then it will go in the opposite direction. Does everyone understand the motion? Okay, so, um, I guess we, uh, those in favor by raising their hand. Uh, do you want to direct this one, Tracy? As the Chair of, um, Committee of the Whole, do you want to be the, the tabulator for this?
I can tabulate.
Okay, thank you. So then it would be all those in favor of this motion.
Okay.
To clarify, that is the motion to leave it as it is.
It's the motion to leave it as it is, and I'm, I'm looking to see the hands up function so that all the names can be seen. And that looks like the same eight that said they wish to continue as it currently is.
You mean six, I think. Don't you?
Eight. And then, um, if you could please take your hands down. And those opposed. So Joanna, Ethan, Leah, Cindy, and Jean's not here, but we know her wishes. Um, so that it goes eight to four. So the motion carries and, um, that finishes the work on this working group's um, mandate this term. And I'm sure we will see it again in the next term. Thank you very much for your participation in this, and I know that it's always a difficult issue.
Leah, is your hand still up? Okay, awesome. Okay, so thanks, everybody. Uh, we'll go on to three point six point two, which is communication with education partners. And this is a potential notice of motion that I wanted to make. Uh, and, uh, so I wanted to give everybody a heads up here and, and seek your um, input and shaping if, if you have some. So the idea here is that HDSB works with and collaborates with the various levels of government in things like, uh, getting new schools approved and built. Um, bigger picture policy stuff, uh, and, and so on. So I'm thinking of municipalities, I'm thinking of, uh, the MPs and the MPPs and even the MPs. And the purpose of this motion would be to develop a communications protocol um, that applies to us when dealing with issues that apply also to those parties. So for example, if, uh, the minister was, um, I don't know, making, making an announcement, uh, somewhere uh, that we would ensure that we've notified our municipal counterparts, if it was something that affected them. It's not the best example, but it's all I've got at this moment in time. So basically, it is, uh, seeking the establishment of a communication protocol that we as trustees would follow to build that collaborative piece. Because I've seen a number of times over my, uh, two terms where, you know, the town's doing something and trustees don't get invited or vice versa. And often it's just, it's just a function of time, but still the effects of that are not necessarily the best. Um, so, so that's part one of a potential motion. Part two would be to circulate the motion to our partners uh, and request that they consider this, uh, give the same consideration to developing that kind of, uh, communication protocol. And I would like to put that forward at one of the next two meetings, depending on, uh, human resources to make that happen. Um, so I look for your, if, if anybody has a gigantic, like, whoa, that shouldn't happen or, um, wants to collaborate on that, uh, I would love to hear it in brief at this point in time. And I see Margot, Andrea, and one other hand. So go Margot, then Andrea, and then the other person will pop up. Amy, yeah.
Yeah, super brief. Um, you know, you know, you have my support and collaboration on this one. Um, I think we have started to make those baby steps, um, as we talked about earlier today, with those joint meetings that Rob Burton's, that were set up between mayors and school trustee bodies or chairs and vice chairs. So, um, I think we tried to start that piece, and I think, you know, memorializing it in a motion goes a long way and hopefully encourages other people to follow our vision.
Andrea, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that, uh, yeah, it, I think it would be good to do that. Because again, back in tw- twenty eighteen, uh, we were having discussions, uh, with, uh, the mayors, regional chairs uh, and, uh, councillors and stuff over schools, et cetera. And so it, right now of like, at this point, what we do is it's kind of reactive, whereas we could be a little bit more proactive. I, so I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Uh, Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, what Margot and Andrea said, and I think it's a good direction to go. And thank you for bringing this forward.
My pleasure. And so the, the trick will be in the wording, I would think, to, to make it collaborative and, and collegial. And then we're asking the next term of trustees to, to turn their mind to, to what that could look like. So, um, okay, thank you. I don't see any other comments, so we'll just keep moving on. Um, we have, now we're at four point O, which is trustee questions and comments. Are there any of those for Committee of the Whole? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will look at the public questions. And I just want to note that in the time between meetings of Committee of the Whole, we did receive a question, um, related to, uh, accommodation planning. Uh, and that has now been, because it's related to a single school uh, and not, uh, a governance issue per se at this point. Um, and because the LTAP is so timely, that question has been referred to uh, General Manager Tebow and Superintendent Fowler, uh, as the superintendent to reach back to that person. Um, and other than that, um, there have been no other questions and comments that, um, since our last meeting and that haven't been also addressed through the board, questions and comments format. So, uh, there are there are none of those. Okay, so before we wrap up this meeting, I just have a couple of quick things to say. I believe this is the last Committee of the Whole meeting for this term. I want to express my gratitude to all of you for, um, allowing me to do this role. The purpose of the Committee of the Whole is to have a less formal space where we can deliberate on matters of public education governance in the HDSB. And I think our discussion tonight about school naming is a great example of, of that. And hearing the various sides about how we can do the very best we can for students. And having Ethan and Cindy also, uh, give their perspectives is just great. And I think setting an example of democratic processes that, uh, will serve this community, uh, well. It's a place to test our ideas and hear views from within and beyond this boardroom. We've hatched, we've incubated ideas like Halton Educative Action, Reimagine Forward, all of this policy work. And we've got through it with really, really differing views. So bringing these together, uh, these differing views of ourselves in the community is not easy, nor should it be in a democratic system. But it is a reflection of how I think we want to conduct our business in HDSB. And just lastly, people who know me know that I love Rush and I just, uh, and that I quote them often. Who hold the torches, I'm not sure this is one of those, but must be the ones who start to mold a new reality, which is closer to the heart. And I know your hearts and your minds have been absolutely and fully engaged in our work together. And for that, I am truly, truly thankful. And I know there Andrea wants to pop off and, uh, and, and start singing. And, uh, that is a wonderful, wonderful way to, to wrap, and I'll turn it over to you, Curtis.
Uh, thank you so much, Tracy, on behalf of the entire senior team and the staff and students and families and communities of the Halton District School Board. I'd just like to say thank you for your leadership of the Committee, Committee of the Whole and for everything that you have done to lead us through a lot of various topics to the points that you have raised. So I just wanted to acknowledge all the great work that you have done, the leadership that you have showed, and, uh, for that, we're grateful.
And I as well to this wonderful, wonderful team. Uh, uh, those claps are for one and all. So on that note, uh, thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful night. We will, the work doesn't stop until the term ends and sometimes then not even. So, uh, I look forward to seeing you at our upcoming board meetings. Uh, a motion to adjourn, who would like to make that motion? Ah, it's sad that Jean's not here. That's her, her, her thing. Uh, so, sorry, uh, Joanna, in her stead, thank you very much. Is there any discussion on adjourning? No, nobody wants to stay? Okay. Seeing no, uh, opposition to that, then we'll call this meeting to adjourn at nine twenty-four PM, uh, with thanks to one and all. And, uh, Kevin, we can go offline.